So, good evening. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046 PL 1975 C231 S1 amended 2006 C70 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement: Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings' roll call, please.
Ms. Etienne.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. LaRaca.
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney.
Yes.
Mr. Saunders.
Yes.
Ms. Breach.
Yes.
Ms. Savas Anderson.
Yes. Please stand for the flag.
.....................................................................
Okay, we're going to move on with our agenda. Good evening, Mr. Grillo.
Hello.
You're at the end.
Yeah.
I'll give you a moment to settle yourself, Mr. Grillo.
Thank you.
Chairpersons, please be prepared for your reports. Mr. Hastings, will you begin with the finance?
Yes, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, the 15th. We discussed the progress of the Energy Savings Improvement Plan. The next steps in that project are to move forward with a solar competitive contracting resolution so that we can have service providers come out, examine the roofing and potential for solar, and then to provide us with a proposal on what we could save by utilizing solar power on our buildings. They did come out and look at some of the buildings for appropriateness of panels on the roof, and the one building that they thought would be a good fit is the middle school. We talked about state funding adjustments. As everyone knows, the state reduced our aid by $5.3 million for the 2021 school year. The district administration and the board went through and made necessary adjustments to absorb that loss in state funding, but with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, state revenues were severely depressed. There was concern that when the governor re-announced his budget going forward, there would be additional cuts to state funding. Fortunately for Asbury Park, we did not receive any additional cuts from the original number. We also discussed the Road Back Plan put out by the DOE as relates to COVID-19, and discussed the various subcommittees that are being set up by administration that include various constituencies in the membership, and those groups are looking at various aspects of reopening in September and what that will look like for staff and students. And then we also discussed the recent change in the sort of technology certifications the state gives out to school districts. There's a new program called Digital Schools, and that's being sponsored by Sustainable Jersey Digital Schools. So, administration is moving forward, looking at that plan and how we can apply it to the district and get that certification.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Madam Chair of Buildings and Grounds?
We had no facilities request. We did discuss the Road Back, as Jeff mentioned a few minutes ago, and then we had a couple of building projects going on. We had the baseball field at the high school, middle school classrooms getting painted, tiles getting replaced, sanitizing the buildings in compliance with COVID-19, and creating doorways into neighboring rooms. We did discuss coming back here for this meeting tonight, and the recording of the meetings, and also the committees also discussed the change with the Digital Schools Program with Sustainable New Jersey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any questions for either Finance or Buildings and Grounds? Thank you. Ms. Breach, so she isn't here, so in her absence, Ms. Lozinski, are you able to report out on athletics?
I haven't printed up the minutes of the meeting. I have to go from memory. We talked about spring sport, I mean, fall sports, and of course, that's been adjusted practice, I believe, starting in August, and they skip a month in September to get back to school, and then I think the first game is the beginning of October for the fall sports. I don't remember too much of the other things we discussed. I did, like I said, I didn't print the agenda out.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
The practice began on Monday, and so the appointment of the coaches was essential in ensuring that our students were ready to have the strength and conditioning that's needed in the event a season is on the horizon.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Lozinski, would you please report out on policy?
Certainly. Most of the policies you'll see on the agenda are mandated updates. You will notice that there is a new Coronavirus Response Act, Policy 1649. If you get a chance, take a look at it. It's pretty thorough, and there is three policies. I don't know, Jeff, were they reviewed and updated for this reading then, or is that for next month?
I'm sorry, which policies are you?
Immunization, personnel records, and the administrative opiate antidote. There was going to be some reviewing before today's meeting, just in case there were some changes, or we'll just do it next month.
Well, those were put on for the general reading, and there may be an adjustment for the expulsion in that it talks about the hearing and the superintendent's order designees inputted to those suspensions.
Yeah, we also talked about the Road Back Plan also, as the other committees did, and then we were briefed on the sustainability technology initiative also. But I do want to add, this is on our minutes, is that Ms. Etienne brought to my attention a resolution from the New Jersey School Boards about equity, and the committee discussed it and thought it was a good idea to place it on the agenda, so it kind of reaffirms our commitment to equity in all phases of our school, education, social life here in the district, and so that's on the agenda, if you had a chance to read it. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Ruiz, if you would report out on curriculum?
We look at curriculum instruction. We have several items on the curriculum instruction agenda. If you look at number...
Can you read?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, I can use them right now. Okay. Hello? Okay. So, we have several items on the agenda for the curriculum and instruction, just a couple of highlights. One, number 12, looking at bringing in musical enrichment into our summer school program, and that will take place for our youngest learners from pre-K to second grade, covered by our Early Childhood Department. The next item is an item that was approved before, but wanted to show you that it's changed over from a traditional curriculum, which was Gold and Gold Plus Platform for our preschool students, to a Creative Curriculum Cloud, which makes it more of an online program, which is obviously something we need at this moment. So, the cost is there. It's basically the same program, but now moving over to a cloud platform. And then the rest of the items are all curriculum items. Highlight number 14 there for our CTE, looking at having students become certified as a patient care technician in our program. And then number 15, expanding our engineering unit so that it includes our seventh and eighth graders who next year start, excuse me, this fall will start at the high school building. So, it'll give us a nice flow of students into our CTE programs from seventh grade and on up. So, I have, if anybody has any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Lozinski? Yeah. When the individuals are appointed to write these curriculums, then you'll come back with those approvals, because right now, there's no names under the...
Right, yeah, we're just putting up, we're going to post for the positions.
Okay. And the other question I had on the bottom of B12, the beginning of number 14, that's four units, correct? It says Allied Health 4. I'm assuming four units because of total.
Say that again. I'm sorry, Ms. Lozinski, sorry to you.
Bottom of B12.
Yes.
Number four.
Mm-hmm.
At the end, it says Allied Health 4. Should there be four units? I'm assuming it's four units.
Yes.
Yes, that's four units. That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Four units. I'll make that clear.
Were there any other questions for Mr. Ruiz?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, there's just one thing I want to highlight that I skipped on Buildings and Grounds. I forgot to speak on, it's on page B15, item number four. It's a collaboration with the Asbury Park Public Arts Commission. It's for mural that will be at Barack Obama. It's highlighting social justice, environmental justice, and it's folding in the district's curriculum with that. The district will be contributing about $1,500 in materials, and I think it's going to be done by a student or next student of the district.
Any questions regarding that?
That's on the addendum, right?
Yes.
Let me just...
Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, I want to add, thank you, Madam Etienne, for bringing that up. As Board Member Barbara Lozinski pointed out, and Ms. Etienne had made mention of the equity focus, and so this is another opportunity to have a visual interpretation as well as instruction that will be tied to supporting our curricular agenda. So, thank you again for, as a board, always spotlighting, focusing, and highlighting social justice, environmental justice, and equity within our curriculum.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Lozinski?
Who has the... I have the scroll. Mrs. General, if you have... Oh, okay. No question. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And so now, we're at public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167.
Before I open, the public participation...
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open, I have a statement that I wish to make. Usually, when we have a board meeting, there are only a few of our residents here, and since COVID, we have changing times. These are difficult times for us because we wear our mask now, and sometimes when someone waves at me, I don't even know who you are because we have these masks on. We're not able to hug, shake hands. These are difficult times, but we're here, and because these are different times, there's going to be mistakes that are made because we're all learning. So, in March, our board meeting was canceled. It was canceled because of COVID. Members were not comfortable coming to the board meeting. We had a board meeting in April. We also had a special meeting, and we were taking a conservative approach by allowing the public, you, to participate by email. There were some things that had taken place in other communities, at other board meetings that were not so pleasant, so we took that conservative approach to protect us, you. Since that time, I have learned that there are concerns from the public, that they want to be heard, and you should be, and you shall be. We all have made mistakes, and mistakes are okay because that's how we learn. And when I'm mentoring my young girls, I said, "Make a mistake because you will learn from that." So, we have made mistakes here, but moving forward, it is important that you, as the public, you who placed us here in these seats, have an opportunity to voice your concerns, to say what it is that you need to say. And so, at this meeting, some of you are here, a few of you are here, but others are not able to participate. So, I am going to ask the board to consider a special board meeting next Thursday so that you can then, the public, we won't have anything on the agenda except you, and you can voice your concerns, make your comments, and say what it is that you need to say. I want to hear you. You're important to us, and as I said, we made mistakes, but we're learning from them, and I hope that you will give us an opportunity to correct what was wrong. So now, in accordance to public policy, in accordance with the Board Policy 0167, public participation is now open. Please come to the podium, state your name, your address. You have three minutes, and thank you.
This is so difficult to solve these masks on. Hello, my name is Arva Council, and my address is 302 Third Avenue, and my son is a student in the Asbury Park School District, and I have a bit of concerns about the survey that I took today, and I looked on other school district surveys, and I see that the way that they had it set up is where, on our school district, I'm just going to talk about mine for ours first. So, I took it today.
Ms. Council, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want to hear what you have to say, and so does the board. So, if you could keep your mouth really directed towards that mask, much better. Thank you.
It's just these masks, it's just... So, I just have a little concern and an issue with the survey I took today. I took the survey. So, my issue is with the Model A and B. I went on other district website, and they swapped the Model A and B. So, I see where Model A, it says in person, the kids go to school Monday, Tuesday, and Monday and Tuesday, and I see remote learning is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Some districts are doing it where the kids are not going to school every day. They go on every other day, and the days that they're not in school, they're required to do virtual learning. So, I think for, I think for this district, certain districts are doing that. I see somebody shaking their hand, no, they're not, but they are. And then Model B, I see where kids are going to school Thursday and Friday, and they're doing virtual learning Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Now, my son is nine, and it was very hard for him to sit in the computer, to sit in front of the computer and do paperwork, and it's hard for him now because he's in summer school. So, my thing is for the ones that are in like first, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, it's very hard for them to sit in front of a computer, let alone, you know, sit there for like 45 minutes or however long they have to sit there for. It's very hard. So, I think like the virtual learning shouldn't be three days. It should be only two days, especially for like if they're in first, second, and third grade, and fourth grade, fifth grade, that's because they could sit longer, because some kids have a short attention span. Now, the model, the model where they have to go in person, I don't think that they should go Monday and Tuesday. I think they should go every other day, not every day, because our kids don't know anything about social distance. They're not going to want to wear this mask all day. It's very hot in this mask. I have to fight with my son to wear this, to go to the store, to even play outside. It's going to be very hard for the kids to come back in September, and I'm for virtual learning, starting in September, especially for if they're kindergarten, preschool, first grade, second grade, third grade. I think they should be home, not in school, because it's going to be very hard for them, very hard to sit in a seat and stay six feet apart from somebody. They don't understand that. They don't know that it's because they haven't been in school since March. So, I think you should take that into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Council.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else?
At the last school board meeting, the present state monitor appeared to address concerns of the parents, teachers, and citizens. You, Ms. Morris, stated that there were rumors with top-heavy administration employee to the straw man fallacy. You insulted intelligence of stakeholders participating during that board meeting by informing the audience that our district must by law have a superintendent. Additionally, you knew of no other district that does not have a business administrator. It is obvious that stakeholders should never question the legal requirements of those two positions. You are being disingenuous. You are overseeing the district. If you are overseeing the district properly, you have compared the districts to other similar demographics, determined their directors, and grossly disproportionate. Can you rationalize the district size and the necessity of all the positions at the administrative level? Identify the miserable success they have in Asbury Park District. Does districts like Kingsburg, Salem City, Pennsville, Gloucester City have similar enrollment yet do not have a quarter of the administration staffs that Asbury Park has? The data clearly demonstrates that these districts have better test scores than Asbury Park District. The administrative to student ratio is a standard benchmark that is on the New Jersey Department of Education website, and is subrayed every district, the state, and every district in the state. Asbury Park has received alerts that the state is below the state average in audit in 2011, and 2019 scores still remain the same. This March, our district does not significantly increase its sensor performance during your tenure as a state monitor. Granted, the state has required you to be here, but to be, to have oversight of our district. However, your 17-year tenure, the district has not made any significant changes for the better. Below the state average during the town hall meeting, Governor Christie made advices to other districts that we had the highest cost per pupil and the worst test scores in the plummeting graduation rate. I would be remiss if I did not mention the 64 policy, the purpose of which the lower academic standards for our children to raise the graduation rate. This poorly said to our parents that the residence of Asbury Park would take time to fix. You consoably said that, but your high-cost salary of $150,000 and your pension, which our children would never be up to our pay, and these children for the last 10 years have not been successful. You have defended the reason why the board is paying $500,000 for a school board office. The amount is disproportionate, and which you could have used...
Mr. Rogers, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your three minutes has expired.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say, I think, Ms. Morris, it's time for you to step down. This is time for a new...
We still can't hear you, Mr. Rogers. Finish up, please.
That's it. It's time for this state monitor to step down. We need some more oversight, especially going through this reopening of our district.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, for your comment.
I want to thank all members of the public for coming out tonight. Ms. Council, your comments are not falling on deaf ears regarding our parent survey. This is our first in terms of putting out a survey. You are correct that there are different models. There are about 12 different models, and in trying to ensure that things don't get overly confusing in terms of a specific model for a specific grade span, we wanted to garner the temperature minimally from our parents. As you know, our governor recently stated that an all-remote option is now available for parents. Our survey gives an example of some options, but it is not an exhaustive list of options. What it does is it allows us to begin to plan and prepare and think about how we will reduce our footprint in our buildings based on the needs and concerns that parents are sharing with us. It's very important for us to know if parents are going to opt to have their children in an all-remote environment, and then if not, we will begin to plan in those hybrid models. That survey gives us the feedback that we need, so thank you for bringing to our attention your specific concern regarding A and B model as opposed to an AA or BB. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Is there anyone else for the public participation before I close it?
I'm not public. What can I say? I have somebody coming in, and I made the mistake of telling her to come in at 7 o'clock. She just wants, it's not a complaint or anything, but it's something that she would like to suggest. So, if she does come in, can we open it up and allow her to speak?
At the 7 o'clock meeting, we will have another opportunity for the public to participate.
Good. Just making sure.
Yes, thank you. Seeing that there is no one else for public participation, it is now closed. Review of regular meeting agenda items. Madam Superintendent?
Good evening again, board members. Are there any questions regarding items on B1? B11? B13? B14? Or B15, and any attachments?
Any questions?
I just have one to follow up on the AmeriCorps members. I see we've done several advertisers, we're not getting good responses.
We have one person on the agenda tonight, Ms. Morris.
No, I know that, but I think you needed 12 or something.
We are going to continue to post, correct, until we have those slots filled.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I had two questions that I just wanted to, well, one was a clarification, the other one was something that was brought to me earlier this week that I wanted to see if I could ask a question to board council about. So, can I do that in workshop, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, okay, first, thank you so much for, you know, having or scheduling the next meeting. I just wanted to clarify if the meeting is going to be, it's, will it be a blended meeting with in-person, phone, and Zoom, like participation?
That is what we can discuss now.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, because I think that, did you say we could discuss it now?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that, you know, it'll serve both the population of individuals that are unable and do not wish to use the Zoom format and want to be present, and I'm sorry, because I have so many notes, so I'm looking down at this as well, and the population of individuals are not comfortable with attending in-person meetings. So, I know that I'm for having a blended meeting. I think West Long Branch did a blended meeting recently, and it's just a better way for information to be disseminated. So...
To your next question, let us put a pause...
Yep.
...right there and discuss this amongst the board, okay? So, were you finished with your comment?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, and you eloquently said it, and I'm, you know, I'm really grateful that you brought it up before anybody else did because it's something that obviously a lot of us know, it's really pressing a lot of people in the community, so thank you for that, and we can discuss it, yeah.
Ms. Lozinski?
Ms. Lizinski?
Sure, I also agree, and it also allows us to increase our participation from the public. You see that when we were doing the virtual meetings, because we had to, our participation has skyrocketed, as well as the number of people that are watching and viewing city council, commission meetings, all those meetings are, their attendance is up. And I think it's important that even, even when the executive order is over, that we do continue blended meetings, because I think it's one of our board goals to, you know, get the community involved in our district, and this is certainly getting the community involved in the district. So, yes, I think we should always, we should do blended meetings from now on.
Well, I'm in agreement with you as far as moving forward, that this is something that we should offer, because, you know, we may have parents that are working but have a comment, unable to, you know, call in. This is an opportunity for them to participate, and so I welcome that approach. Mrs. Jones, did you have a comment?
No.
Or an agreement? Your microphone, please.
Not really. I think everybody has said it very sincerely, and I agree that the more we can involve all of the populace in Asbury, you know, concerning their children, I think that's the best way to go.
Are you in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
May I just add one thing, is the, if we could, I think it's better to have somebody raise their hand and actually hear them speak, because it should be like they're really here. You don't want them, want them, the people that are on virtual meetings to feel that they're just writing a sentence and sending in a question.
No, it's not going to be an email format.
Good.
It is going to be a live call, so that every voice is heard, because we appreciate each and every one of our members. This is an opportunity for them, and an opportunity for us as well, so that we can learn and understand what their concerns and their needs are. So, Mr. Hastings, would you please schedule a special meeting for next Thursday? Now, would the board prefer to meet at six or seven?
I'll be away, but if it's, I can, if I can do virtually, I'll hook on to the meeting, yes.
Okay, you would prefer virtual meet?
Well, blended.
I know.
Mr. Hastings, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would you prefer that, would you have the technology for us to have virtual meeting here, you know, us in person and then virtual as well, or would it be best that we would meet virtually?
The meeting format that the board chooses to provide to the public is what we will provide. We've looked at some options over the past month to see if we can change things or address other desires, and what the board decides they want to do is what we'll do.
I just wanted to say, piggyback on that, Mr. Hastings has, as well as our Madam Superintendent, we have been in discussion, you know, looking at various formats, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't have any hiccups, because that can be embarrassing if someone has made a call and they're not able to be heard. So that's why we wanted to make sure that we have the best system in place to address your concerns. And so Mr. Hastings has looked into that, Madam Superintendent has approved that, so we will meet, we'll talk about it, but you will see the announcement, and there will be a meeting next Thursday.
Did we decide on the time?
What time, members? Six or seven?
Six.
So, I think, why don't we, why don't we do it at, why don't we do it at seven o'clock?
I, I see, Ms. Lizinski, you're at six o'clock.
Is it six or seven?
Seven. What do you think, six or seven?
Eight.
Pick up, hands.
Put your hands, six.
Six?
Six.
It's not going to get involved with dinnertime?
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Nothing against you, you can be any members, but I'm asking for, so Mr. Grillo.
Yes. So, so I think, I think six o'clock is great, yeah.
Six is fine.
Eight.
I'll make every effort.
Six. Mr. Six, Ms. Etienne. It's six o'clock, Mr. Hastings, I'm sorry. To give the public an opportunity to participate.
So it will be virtual?
It will be, yes.
Just virtual?
My understanding-
Or either way?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Hastings.
Yes, so my understanding, and please correct me, is that the board would like an in-person meeting like we're having right now with a component that allows folks to call in from home.
Yes.
Right, and then also the board members, if, the board members will be able to attend virtually as well. So it's not just the public, but also the board. Oh, no? Okay, because that, that was-
Why can't board members be attended virtually?
So, so if I can-
Just not executive session?
Yeah, if I can. So I know that there's a first reading that happened, I believe, bylaw number zero-one-five-one or five-five, I can't remember, but that was at the last board meeting. That was the first reading, and that bylaw, should it be enacted by the board, would allow for virtual participation by board members to the extent that they cannot be at the board meeting, whether they're out of state, whether it's a medical issue, whatever it may be. That, that bylaw has not had yet a second reading. I don't know if it's on for tonight or not, I can't recall. I also can't recall if the final version of that bylaw required board members to essentially seek approval prior to their participation, which, and what I mean by that is, I believe the last version that I've seen had something in there that required the members present, essentially, to vote to allow the person, the board member who is remote, to participate. Obviously, if that passes tonight, if it's on the agenda for tonight, and if it passes tonight, it's not an issue. Nevertheless, to the extent that we want to include board members to the greatest extent possible, even absent that policy or bylaw being in place, the board on its own could certainly make an exception and/or allow a board member to participate remotely for whatever reason, he or she is out of state, whatever it may be. So the one thing I do want to just impress upon the board is pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act and others, and other regulations, and even board policies, to the extent we're going to have a virtual slash in-person live meeting, my only concern is that we be able to, in this room, hear all of the callers and the callers hear each and every one of us. So to the extent that we have the ability to patch in the soundboard into whatever platform we're doing, those are the kind of things that I think are going to need to be fleshed out this week, so that we can be ready for Thursday, to the extent that we're not able to have, you know, for one reason or another, if there's a slow-speed Wi-Fi here or whatever that may, you know, inhibit or preclude us from having a camera set up in here for next week, you know, I just want everyone to, you know, while the expectation is that it will be a combined live, in-person, and virtual, there may be some technological things that need to be worked out before we can bring the live portion in, if that makes any sense. Or maybe we could do it in a different room, I don't know. But, you know, it's a great idea, I just don't know if technologically we have everything that we need in this room to allow it to happen in next week.
So, I mean, I think-
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
If we, so if we have to choose between live and virtual, what we could possibly do is see if we, investigate if we can do the blended meeting. If not, let's default to just a Zoom meeting with public participation, because that, that's the one that satisfies the greater, you know, good of, you know, hearing from a lot of people.
And to be clear, Mr. Grillo, I'm only talking about next Thursday's meeting. I think after that, by next Thursday or shortly thereafter, we'll have it, to the extent there are any technological hiccups, I think that it'll be worked out.
So that would have to be decided tomorrow, so that we can get proper advertising for publication and notice?
Yeah, so forty-eight hours notice.
Right, so we send it to the newspaper tomorrow. The Asbury Park Press, in all likelihood, will publish Tuesday for a Thursday meeting.
Okay.
Which barely meets the standard.
And just to be clear, it will have a live call-in, whether it's Zoom or blended, it will be live call-in, no email?
For the third time, Mr. Grillo, yes.
Okay, okay, just making sure.
Ms. Lizinski?
I just had a question for Adam. Isn't it, don't you have to send it to him? They're not obligated to publish it, a special notice meeting or anything like that, you're just obligated to get it to them when they-
So, my understanding is that- The language under the Open Public Meetings Act, I believe they say transmission of, I think the word transmission is in there, but even setting that aside for a moment, under the COVID executive orders and special legislation that has gone through, arguably, notice would be satisfactory if it was just electronic on the board's website, under these COVID slash state of emergency situations. So to answer the first part of your question is, I believe it's transmission, but nevertheless, regardless, we can post on our own.
So are we saying? So, emergency aside, you're not stating that a day before a meeting, knowing that an ad will not be published, that we can utilize that?
What I'm saying is, under these circumstances, to the extent that we know that we're going to have a board meeting for next Thursday, my strong suggestion would be that we get that, that notice in as soon as possible, and also post it on our board's website, so that one way or the other, we're covered. How, how long do you think we're going to need to find, how long do you think it would take to find out whether or not we're going to be doing a live component for next Thursday?
Well, regardless, there'll be a live component, whether it's entirely virtual or a blended in-person and virtual.
And the only reason I-
I have no doubt that we can publish tomorrow with a virtual meeting with live call-ins. That's not a question. The question, as you said, is when we get into an environment such as this, where we have live audience asking questions, and then you have a laptop or some other function that's going to get people at home that may create a lag or a latency of communication that people are hearing the superintendent or the board president and getting five seconds, and we sort of get into that, you know?
So, to be very safe and to be very conservative, my suggestion would be that next week's meeting be a virtual meeting and advertise as a virtual meeting. That will give us the time to kind of play with the technology, so that by August's meeting, we are ready to go, and all of the hiccups have been worked out with regard to this room, and our live presence in this room for a meeting. So I just think, to be on the safe side, everyone, you know, obviously, we're concerned about engaging the people that are at home in virtual, so to that, to that end, I think a virtual meeting next week would satisfy that. We wouldn't have any issues with regard to Open Public Meetings Act notice, notifications or anything like that. Again, it's the safest way to go, but you could also roll the dice, too.
Can I say something? We can also advertise through the pages of the kids getting their work at home, and send an email at home that the parents very well may pick up just because of the work the kids are doing. It's a good way of communicating it to every household.
Yes, so based on what our board counsel, his advice, what is the board's pleasure? So that we can direct Mr. Hastings.
I'm assuming virtual for next Thursday.
Yeah, virtual.
So that's done. Mr. Grillo, you have one other comment?
So, yeah, the other one was a question to Mr. Weiss, who is very intimidating-looking right now, by the way, with his gloves.
I'm going to do magic tricks.
You look like a serial killer at a dinner party. But, so there is, I noticed that, that there was a charge that we have to pay for, for legal fees for, for board members that were given, that had ethics charges. This is something that I think is a waste of our money, a waste of our energy. I don't know if it's something that we can do to either, you know, direct the arbiter to do something about it, to drop it. I don't know if we even have the authority to drop it, because I don't think it was the full board at the time that, that did that, right? So I wanted to see if there was some guidance where the end result will be to drop these, these ethics charges that are costing us money, and they're against residents that are not even, you know, board members anymore. So, but I don't know the legalities of it, so that's why I'm, I'm asking you about it.
Madam State Monitor?
Mr. Grillo, I would like to agree with you. I did some research based on the, from nineteen, of nineteen, from twenty thousand sixteen to twenty thousand twenty, the board, these charges and these, whatever adjective you want to apply, have cost the taxpayers a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They were suits that were brought by board members, in some cases against board members, most of them against board members. It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money. I have the list, and I have the cases, and I'm in agreement with you, and I urge you to look at some kind of a legal protection, which, without stripping the right of the individual board member to pursue what he or she thinks. I know that there are some boards that have required first, before that's filed, for that board member that feels that they have a charge to make, to come before the rest of the board and convince the board of the charge before the board permits and votes to move forward. So I'm in complete agreement, I think, for any one individual board member to today bring against another board member, which immediately eliminates an insurance rebate. So let me put that out there, because it's board against board, the insurance company does not pay for that.
So the board just pays for that?
The board pays for it, and as, and as of right now, it's over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in, in, in those three, really, three years because of it. So if there's a way for somebody to draft, or the legal department to draft, something that would require first that the board be in approval to move forward and feel that this is something that is worth pursuing. Adam, I don't know if-
Yeah, absolutely. So it's my understanding that the one case in particular that you're referring is from around two thousand seventeen or so, and it's also, and so, on the front end, I want to say that we, my firm was not here then, but had we been here, and had we received the denial from the insurance carrier based on some board member-on-board member exception that they apparently used, you can bet that I would have challenged the insurance carrier's coverage determination, because, you know, out of the gate, unless I see something in the policy that specifically precludes coverage for board member-on-board member claims, I don't, you know, I've even defended board member-on-board member claims as an assigned insurance panel attorney. So I don't know the specifics of why coverage was, may have been denied back in seventeen, or what the, what the carrier's position is, but I can tell you that I'm aware of board member-on-board member cases that have been covered by at least one insurance carrier. So to the extent that happens, again, a coverage denial, I mean, my office is in constant contact with Mr. Hastings whenever a complaint is filed or received, you know, I kind of work with him on, you know, shepherding it through the insurance process. With regard to Ms. Morris's suggestion, I, I, I think it's a good suggestion, however, I don't know whether or not that would be held to be enforceable. A board member does not lose his or her right to bring an ethics charge against anyone just because he or she is on the board. That would be stripping a board member of his or her right as just a member of the public. So while we can draft it, my concern would be the enforceability of it, to be quite honest. And I think at this point, that's all I'm going to say, because I don't want to get into giving legal advice in public, but that's, you know, we can look at it.
Yeah.
The other thing, just in order to keep costs down, just in general, with litigation and legal fees in general, I've been, my, my mantra is, if there's coverage- I've been, my 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 mantra is, if there's coverage for it, submit for it. Um, and Mr. Hastings and I kind of work as a team in getting that stuff done. Um, and to the extent that there is coverage or the possibility of coverage being available. I can guarantee you that I will fight hard, uh, to make sure that there is coverage. Because at the end of the day, there's a big difference between a hundred and twenty thousand dollar legal bill and a ten thousand dollar insurance deductible.
Right.
And that's dollars in the classroom otherwise.
And and look, I I I I agree that I I don't, uh, this, this isn't a question about stripping, um. The rights of someone to to file an ethics charge because I think that in certain ca- in 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 a lot of cases. You know, that's something that's important and and that's, this isn't about, uh, that in particular. I think it might have had to something to do because one of the charges had to do with the board counsel at the time or something like that. But, um. You know, to me.
There's one more thing I I I'd be remiss if I didn't, um, address one of the things you raised. And that is, can we get this to be dropped? Um, and I'll tell you, I've been involved in, over my career, I've been before the Ethics Commission a number of times. Um, and I've been in situations where the two parties have kind of worked out an agreement. Um, yet the Ethics Commission, uh, and or the Attorney General's Office. Will not allow the case to be just dropped.
Right.
Um, and so there are certain types of cases where the state Attorney General's Office will step in the shoes of the complainant. And prosecute the case. And I'm using a a word that sounds like it's criminal, but it it that's what it's called. They would prosecute the case at the Office of Administrative Law. At that point, once the AG steps in the shoes of the complainant, you know, you're really ceding all control. I've also had cases where we've gone to the commission and said, we we have resolved this case, please drop it. And they've said, no. We have enough here and we're going to continue with this. So. You know, I I understand the concern and what makes sense and from a practical perspective may not otherwise.
I mean, yeah, it's it's almost a common sense perspective too. It's why, let's see if we can at least communicate to the AG. You know, I don't know if, you know, some sort of amicus brief type of type of communications where we say, look. The the, you know, the 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 individuals aren't even on the board anymore. It's costing us a lot of money. We're a district that is hemorrhaging money at this point, and we can't afford these kind of shenanigans right now. And it it doesn't take away from the seriousness of the ethics charge. I want to make that clear, you know? Um, but to me, it, this is ancient history and, you know, I it's it's something that's costing us a lot of money. It's costing everybody that's involved a lot of money. So, um, I just hope that there's a way that we can. We can communicate to the AG and to the Ethics Commission that. If the majority of the board is in agreement, that 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 this isn't something that we want anymore.
Yeah, I I'd be happy to communicate that, and I do almost every time I arrive at a at a at a consensus with, you know, with the parties. Um, I can also tell you that I've had numerous complaints where the, by the time it's gotten around to a hearing, the person is no longer on the board. And, you know, I have made requests, come, you know, please, the person's not even on the board anymore. And ten times out of ten, it will be, that's okay, we're still proceeding. Um, I that's only been my experience. That's all I could tell you. Other people may have had different experiences.
Even if you go there with a mask and the gloves?
Was there anything else, Mr. Grillo, regarding this?
That's it. Those are my two concerns.
So I heard the State Monitor say that other boards do have something in place.
Well, to my knowledge, there is at least a discussion. If it's not as legally possible. And I understand why it's not. I think I prefaced my comments by saying it wasn't. My agreement with Mr. Grillo's is not the intent to stifle a board member's right to pursue it. But, uh, to my knowledge, and and I haven't missed many meetings. There's never been a discussion since I've been assigned here of the board even knowing in some cases that these cases were going on. There should be at least some procedure, I would think, in place where the rest of the board would have knowledge. Of what is being filed and why, and why the person feels that strongly about it. Even if there's no way to prevent it, at least the rest of the board would be aware of it. And as I said, we just got a bill, a bill was sent this March that is actually, um. Close to two years of 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 billing that totals over another twenty thousand dollars. And and there's been, and that's just in those two years. There are two years before that that there's also, so we're we're looking at a case. Just one of these cases, which is spanning three to four years. The two persons have not been on the board, to my knowledge, in three years at least. And, uh, you do have to wonder when when there are so many other things that are constantly questioned. Um, and should be, why is this money simply not important? So I think it is important, and that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, and and and, uh, Ms. Morris, I, uh, it's my understanding that in that particular case. The former board member, uh, went and retained her own attorney. Um, and then submitted the bills from her own attorney, uh, to the board for reimbursement. And, uh, you know, again, to the extent that that could be submitted, uh, to the insurance carrier and. You know, if there is a coverage denial, the denial be challenged. Um, you have my word that, you know, to the greatest extent possible, I, uh, fight for and.
I'm not suggesting that this is any.
No, I I know, I know that you're not. I know that you're not. But going forward, you know, I will continue to try and protect, uh, to the greatest extent possible. Uh, the the board's resources, for sure.
What I I heard another board member say that it's been five years. It's more than three. So we're looking at something, you know, that's that's taking money from the children. So what I'm asking, uh, Board Counsel. Is to look into, you know, you know, I don't know, policy, whatever you want to call it.
A mechanism.
A mechanism that that any board member who is writing an ethics charge against another board member, that they would have to come before the board. So, and we can't stop them, but at least we would know.
I I really look.
I'll look into it.
Uh, um, go ahead.
All I said was I'll look into it.
Now, I I was gonna say, I mean, I I actually really like, um, the State Monitor's idea of of. Making sure that everybody is up to date because on on these charges and have not necessarily a hearing, but like an open conversation about.
Just asked him to look into.
Yeah, okay, okay, that.
Okay. Is there anything else? Because I want to move move on. All right. Well, it's seven o'clock. So now, thank you, Board Counsel. It is now seven o'clock, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting. I need a motion, please.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten four six PL nineteen seventy five C two three one S one. Amended two thousand six C seventy S two, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice. Of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting. To Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January third, twenty twenty by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Bulletin Bulletin Board. District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January third, twenty twenty. Our mission statement is that the Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive. And progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings' roll call, please.
Setien. Mr. Grillo.
Yep.
Ms. Jones. Mr. Lattaraca. Ms. Lizinski. Mr. Pinkney. Mr. Saunders. Ms. Breach. Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, presentations. You don't have one, so just break your secret to his, okay? Madam Superintendent, you have a presentation, please?
Uh, I do not have a superintendent's presentation. I have my superintendent's report.
Excuse me.
I'll go over some data, but additionally, I would like to read. The next level Asbury Park School District Plan Statement. And I'm going to read it aloud so it could be encoded, recorded in the record as a matter of record. Um, as several board members mentioned during the workshop, we have been engaged in planning. For the reopening of school. On June twenty sixth, twenty twenty, Governor Phil Murphy's executive order mandated that all New Jersey. Public schools deliver in-person instruction. Guidance was provided in the form of the rollback plan from the New Jersey Department of Education. In response to the guidance received from the state, the Asbury Park School District established a reopening school committee and pandemic response teams. Inclusive of representation from central office and district administration, the Asbury Park Educational Association. The Asbury Park Principals and Supervisors Association and the Board of Education. We also established subcommittees to engage a broader number of stakeholders for input and feedback. These subcommittees are scheduling, policy, transportation, food service, facilities, security. Curriculum and Instruction, Social and Emotional Learning, Technology, Sports, Staffing, Health and Communications. With representation from various stakeholders who are examining these areas in greater detail. On July twenty first, twenty twenty, Governor Murphy issued revised guidance that provides. A provision for parents to choose a full virtual learning option for students. The Asbury Park School District welcomes this opportunity to offer parents as much flexibility as possible. The Asbury Park School District's reopening plan will offer a hybrid approach that allows for in-person instruction. As well as an all remote learning academy. No matter which option parents choose, in person or remote. We are committed to providing quality instruction that meets the needs of our diverse community of learners. Please note that all in-person instruction will comply with the Centers for Disease Disease Control. And state health protocols by implementing social distancing when possible. Face coverings with an allowance for mask breaks and enhanced safety and cleaning measures. With the recent guidance from the governor, the district released a parent survey to allow us to better understand their desires. We also conducted an initial staff survey and will release a more comprehensive one in the coming days. To further measure their sense of readiness with returning in the fall. Lastly, please know that we are working diligently in an ever-changing landscape. To ensure our children receive the best, most equitable instruction we can provide. So I wanted to read that as a matter of the, for the record. As it relates to the data. I wanted to share our virtual, our voluntary virtual summer school participation. Very pleased with that. There was a little concern that perhaps because we weren't going to have students on site. That the participation would be non-existent. Um, for our pre-K. Summer school participation, we're, we've noted ninety-nine students are registered and participating on a regular basis. Kindergarten twenty-nine, first grade fifty-one, second grade fifty-four. Third grade fifty-six, fourth grade four, forty-one. Fifth grade fifty-two, sixth grade thirty-three, seventh grade twenty-two, eighth grade twenty-two. It was critically important for us in planning for a future that is very uncertain, where we have to be flexible and fluid. It was critically important that we take the opportunity to use our virtual summer school as a pilot. To see how, what, where, when we had to pivot quickly in March. March seventeenth, to be exact, into a remote learning environment. There's some lessons that we learned. What did we learn? How are we engaging with our students? Are our students able to access this virtual setup? Our virtual summer school pilot program is continuously providing with that, providing us with that information. It allows administration, including myself, to do virtual walkthroughs in the classroom where I'm observing. Instruction between teacher and student. I'm able to involve and observe the engagement of students and teachers. In the learning process. It gives us a lens into seeing how the curriculum is being applied. How the technology needs and the devices that we've provided our students with to ensure that all families have internet connectivity. In their homes. If they've come to sign out a device, we have them available. We are looking at and measuring all of those things. Additionally, we've, uh, launched an online registration because during this pandemic. Uh, being extremely responsive as well as available and engaging with our families and caregivers. We launched an online registration format because we did not want to have families. That are able or have the privilege to shelter in place have that as a barrier for registration. And so in comparing our registration this same time last year to this this year. In July twenty nineteen, we had an enrollment of seventeen hundred and one students. This year, we have an enrollment of seventeen hundred and ninety-three students, where we see an increase of ninety-two students. In almost every grade level. We are noticing an increase of student participation this year and student enrollment this year over last year. Which is, uh, confirmed by the increase of ninety-two students that we have officially enrolled in the Asbury Park School District. I want to commend the team, the executive leadership in their respective areas for their oversight and ensuring. That during this global pandemic, we were extremely responsive to our parents and our families. At times, even with the internet connectivity that we have placed in the homes. And I want to thank the board for your support in ensuring that we are at the fo- the forefront. Of addressing the digital divide that we know is problematic in the United States. And communities that serve Black and Brown and Latinx children. They are extremely vulnerable. These are communities that do not have the privilege of sheltering in place. These are communities where high poverty, Black and Brown and Hispanic children find themselves in the most vulnerable situations. Having to go to work during a global pandemic. For which the board and the executive leadership team have been very creative and innovative to ensure. That our students did not lose out or fall behind in graduation during what could have been a major upset and regression for them. Our students had to work, many of them, and through option two. Our school counselors, our Director of School Counseling, Debbie Sylvia, our Director of Student Services. Our Director of Special Education and our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Sat down to ensure that those students would be able to have that count toward their credits. Through community service and a provision allowed by the Department of Education. And so I want to take that time to commend them. And I also want to highlight and acknowledge that we were able to have an in-person graduation a few days ago. One of a few in the state of New Jersey, for which I'm particularly thankful that our board. Worked with us, worked with the administration to ensure that we could give our children in Asbury Park that in face. In-person experience, especially because it highlighted the first cohort of sixteen students that graduated. From our dual college program known as the Dream Academy. Those are students that have an associate's degree and a high school diploma. That completes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And if you were not able to attend, I do believe that the graduation is on our website. Am I correct?
That is correct.
It it was absolutely beautiful and it was right on our field. So it was, yes, you were there as well, Mr. Grillo. It was a wonderful, beautiful, uh, presentation and we were able to recognize our students. Madam Superintendent, a job well done and congratulations to your team as well. Thank you.
Madam President, can I, can I add something to to what you said? So I wear this mask with the class of twenty twenty and and, uh, congratulations. So I go down to my my local coffee shop downtown at Sweet Waters, who fantastic new coffee shop that hires local youth like you wouldn't believe. coffee shop that hires local youth like you wouldn't believe, right? And I'm ordering my drink and this, I say kid, young man says, "Nice mask." And I go, "Yeah," so I, "Thanks." And he goes, "Yeah, I, I was there. I graduated." This kid was so, this young man was so just enthusiastic and, and really happy with how, even through COVID, the, the instruction that was, that was being done, the virtual learning, and especially the graduation, he was like all smiles and he was so happy to see that, you know, the board, members of the board were there. He was saying how he can't wait. He's doing this job, but he's an entrepreneur and he loves what he, what he did, you know, the, the last year. And just, it was incredible to get that kind of response. It's one thing to see them going up and getting a diploma. It's another thing when you see a kid with fire and passion in his eyes, he's going to continue forward. So it really, it was something that touched me a lot and I just wanted to share that with everybody, so.
Thank you. And so now we're moving on with our agenda. We're going to enter into public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. If you have a comment, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Toni Furlong, a teacher at Asbury Park High School. My address is 1004 Central Avenue in Asbury Park. I am here presenting this request before the board on behalf of Kayshawn McMillan, better known as Chumsey, former student, athlete, security officer, who passed from the COVID virus, or the coronavirus.
Excuse me, could you just bring the mic down a little bit or, and speak directly into it? Thank you.
Okay, I am here on the behalf of Kayshawn McMillan, better known as Chumsey, a former student, athlete, and security officer who passed for the coronavirus. We would like to name the pathway behind the high school after Kayshawn. While Kayshawn was in school, he faced a lot of challenges. However, he was very respectful and hardworking. After high school, he was a mentor to many students in Pop Warner. Then he became a security officer where he assisted teachers who were challenging students and kept our halls and classrooms safe. In view of the many obstacles that he overcame, he proved to the Asbury Park community and our students that they too can achieve whatever they set their mind to. In remembrance of Kayshawn, I would like to see a street sign, Chumsey Way, on the access pathway behind the high school. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
No. You have a question?
I don't have a question, but you'd have to check first to see whether that's a city, the city road or...
The road, the cement road behind the high school between the athletic fields and the high school is the city road. It's an extension, it's an extension of Seventh Avenue, I believe.
So you'd have to have a discussion about that if...
We'd have to apply to the, the city council to get that done?
The city coun, well, I defer to the attorney, but the city council would have to make that approval. We could join in the request that that be considered, but at the end of the day, I believe it's up to the city.
Yes, i- if it's a city road or an extension of the city road, that falls under the jurisdiction of the city. I'll also remind the board that I believe there's a policy in place with regard to naming of, I don't know if it's buildings, facilities, or I don't know if roads would, would come into that, but there is a board policy, to my recollection, on that. There's got to be a certain period of time, if I remember correctly, after the death of an individual, that, that the facility, whatever it may be, can be named after a person. It's been a while since I've looked at that, maybe two years or so. But, but there is something kind of directly on point in, in the policies on that.
Put your mic on. I thought it was on, sorry. So you can get that information for us?
With, with regard to the naming of, of...
Yeah.
Yeah, I could, we could just flip through. As I sit here right now, I'll pull out my phone and see if I can find it for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's either that or I could save you some money and I can look into it before.
Thank you.
That sounds like an excellent idea. This is essentially a policy chair.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll defer that to Ms. Lizinski instead of Board Counsel. She's the chairperson of policy. And then she can get back to us. Is there anyone else for, and thank you. Is there anyone else for public participation? It is now closed. State Monitor, Madam, State, Madam State Monitor, you have a report?
I would just like to make a statement and it's in somewhat responsive to the gentleman earlier that made a number of comments about the district. I'd just like to caution everybody that when, part of the problem in comparison, in comparing districts, is that you obviously cannot simply look at the size of a district or the size of a budget of a district and make a determination that it's comparable to another district. Asbury has a unique set of problems that a district the same size might not have. That's what changes the budget. It's what changes the needs of the, of the students. And it, in some cases, directs, and it's the engine for directing the budget in the direction that it goes. We have spent in this district a great deal of money and effort on teacher professional development. That was a decision that was started, I believe, four years ago, five years ago, when Dr. Repolek came, because he determined, along with his staff and his administration, that the district was in great need of professional development in many areas, and particularly in technology and the use of technology in the classroom. So it's, it might look on paper to taxpayers or to, to you as a, as certainly a resident, that you, when you look at the district and you compare it to one of the districts that you mentioned in your comments, that all things should look the same. They're not going to look the same. They're very, very different districts that you compare them to. A second point I'd like to make is the determination in Trenton to assign a monitor has little or nothing to do with me as an individual. You would have a monitor here for a number of years, I'm sure. You have in the past, and you will continue to have, whether I'm here or not. Third, some of the facts and numbers that you used, including my salary, were incorrect. So I would not like, since we are on television and this goes out to everybody in the district, to sit and not respond and have people conclude that all of the statements that you made in your statement were correct, because there are not. I don't know where or what the basis for your information is, but I'd be glad to provide you with updates if you prefer them. This district, and this is the last thing that I will say that you made a point about, this district has made great strides. And I, for one, have seen how difficult it has been to take and make some of those strides and the effort that has been expended by the administration and the teaching staff and, in many cases, board members toward progress. It may not be that you can look at academic achievement on a specific grade level and say, "Oh, look, you know, these are X number of points higher." But I don't think that five years ago, you could have ever gone to a graduation and heard about the Dream Academy, the number of students that have been accepted and are going on from that basic foundation to a college acceptance where they are already on their road to having, in many cases, perhaps a better economic life than they would have had if that had been not available to them. There are many instances that I could cite academically that place this district far better than it was a number of years ago. And I think it is very disingenuous to stand and conclude that this district has made no progress. Again, I would challenge who gave you that information and where it came from, because that is not what I have seen and it's not what students have proven to be the case in the Asbury Park School District. I am out and about and I am constantly in contact with people all over the state. And I can tell you, it may not be quantitative, but there's not a time that I'm not out, whether it's at school boards or a convention or any other place, that someone doesn't come up and address me about how Asbury has made gains and has gained the respect of people throughout the state and started to move forward. So I think your comments, although I respect your, certainly your right to have that opinion and your right to make them, and I would march with you for your right to make any comment you want. But I'm telling you as a observer in the district, that this district has worked hard and has moved ahead. And I think it's a very unfair accusation, not made about me. That's why I'm, I've got a kind of a thick skin. You can make any accusation you want, but about the district, I'm sorry, I take exception to it.
Okay, thank you, Madam State Monitor. And now Mr. Hastings, acceptance of minutes?
Yes, could we have a motion for number 10 on A1?
Second. Question? Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Saunders? And Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hastings, I'll read it.
Okay.
Okay. Equity and justice in education, whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education believes that schools play an active role in shaping the values of citizens and future leaders. And whereas the Board of Education believes that successful citizens and leaders possess open minds, embrace diversity, and combat all forms of bias and prejudice, including but not limited to racism, sexism, ageism, religious prejudice, classism, homophobia, and nationalism. And whereas the Board of Education shall to strive to incorporate and promote justice and equity in all aspects of school operations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education directs the chief school administrator to promote justice and equity in all aspects of school operations, including but not limited to, A, employment opportunity, excuse me, employment opportunities including recruitment, hiring, promotion, training, transfer, separation from service, recall to service, compensation and benefits. B, curriculum that minimizes a student's exposure to implicit bias and teaches the contributions of individuals from diverse cultures, races, and backgrounds, including but not limited to African Americans, persons with disabilities, individuals who are identified as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, LGBTQ, as well as other legally recognized protected classes. C, curriculum materials that are written and published by individuals from diverse genders, cultures, races, and backgrounds, including but not limited to African Americans, persons with disabilities, and individuals identifying as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or queer, LGBTQ. D, equitable access to school equipment and resources, including but not limited to technology and necessary infrastructure to maintain access to technology, liberal arts and media resources. E, equitable access to school programs and resources for all students, including students with disabilities. Programs and resources include but not limited to guidance and counseling services, the gifted and talented program, extracurricular activities and athletics. F, equity in the application of conduct and discipline policy in the code of student conduct to ensure that no specific class of students disproportionately represented in detentions, suspensions, and expulsions. G, equity in class assignments, particularly in qualification for and the placement of students in advanced classes. H, equity in grading practices with the use of assessment tools designed to identify skills that students actually possess. I, professional development opportunities as part of the district professional development plan on topics related to combating bias and prejudice in school operations. J, developing effective intervention and referral procedures and remediation options for students and for more systemic problems at the class, grade, and school levels. That's it. Okay. So that's all. That's all. Oh, what's this? Oh. Okay. Okay. I believe we should now go into executive session. Okay? So, what? Will we have? Sure. Okay, so about Madam Superintendent. Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for a consent agenda, please?
I'm requesting a consent agenda for items B1 to B15 and all attachments.
Okay, I need a motion?
Motion.
Question? Okay, roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
All items B1 to B15, Mr. Grillo?
Yes, abstain on B1E, page B1E. I have to abstain on that one.
Okay. B1, letter E. Ms. Etienne?
Yes, I'm abstaining on B3, letter H, and also B4, item 3.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
I'm going to abstain on... Sorry. I'm going to abstain on B3, letter H.
Thank you. Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Sabes Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hastings, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Superintendent.
Madam President.
I'm sorry. Just looking at B3, letter H. It looks like that does not carry. B3H, the appointment of coaches.
Could we...
We have two abstentions and four yeses.
Could we adopt the doctrine of necessity because we don't have a form for that?
I can't hear, I didn't hear your question.
The doctor, doctor necessity, because we have some conflicts on the board, they cannot vote for the personnel appointment. Can we, can we vote in...
So you're deferring to the council? You're asking him a question or...
Tell everybody. Doctor necessity.
Oh, okay.
That's what we get.
We have a personnel...
This year, there's two people.
Well, the beauty of having a state monitor is that the state monitor can take action on her own, to the extent that the, the board was not able to address the issue, given the number of conflicts.
Can't we act like there isn't a state monitor and do the boardy thing and adopt that or...
Yeah, we already have a state monitor in place, so we can't pretend as though she's not here, okay? And she's already approved it.
I don't think she'd let us.
We have a state monitor, we're going to make sure we...
You're right, Joe.
Exactly.
Can I ask a question?
You still have an issue with it, Ms. Lizinski?
No, I don't have an issue, but could Adam just elaborate on the doctor necessity so all the board members understand why I, why I asked for it and what it does and...
Absolutely. You know, we were kind of laughing a little bit, but Ms. Lizinski is absolutely correct in that, to the extent that the board members have conflicts, which would then preclude the board's ability to vote on an issue because of the conflicts, there is what's called a doctrine of necessity, which basically, you know, allows the board to essentially waive the conflicts. There's, there's a process for it. You have to essentially announce out loud what the conflicts are and also... and also discuss the reasons why we need to proceed. So there is a mechanism in place. If we didn't have a state monitor, we probably would be doing that, but, you know, as a result of the fact that we do have a state monitor that's not needed tonight, but, Ms. Lizinski, to your point, it's viable, it's valid, boards do it when they have to, it's very infrequent that it happens, but, you know, for example, my firm represents a board where there's probably six or more conflicts, and if that was the case, nothing would ever get done. So the doctrine of necessity is a real thing.
Can I ask that question?
Sure.
Put your mic on.
In today's time, with all of the problems with connections and being people together and contact sports with COVID, are we still going to pay all these coaches, whether they coach or not?
No. There's, there's, let me, I can directly answer that, because...
I appreciate that.
I'm heading a committee. If you'll notice that the language that we have inserted in there states that if, for instance, there is, let's say the Shore Conference as a conference made the decision that they were not going to play this fall, we would try to invoke the fact that we have no need for the coaches, and therefore, they would be paid for theoretically whatever they've done to that date, but as of the, what is it, the 14th of September, when the season has been designated as officially starting by the state, they have to practice and they have to get to that point. We plan right now, as per the governor's order, of opening school. We have investigated as a committee for the reopening of school, what the Shore Conference and other districts are doing, and as of right now, everybody in our conference has indicated that they are going to field a team, which has led us to conclude and recommend to the superintendent that as of right now, we are recommending a team. If, for instance, that's canceled either by the president, or the governor, or the State Athletic Association, or whatever, or if there's an order not to have school, then this would all be moot and not happen. But as of right now, the kids are, in fact, 44 of them reported the other day, which is a very large number, and the coaches tell me, because I met with them to talk about the safety issues and everything that went on, that the kids are very enthused, and for some of them, it's the first time they've been out of their house, I guess, I would be excited too over that. So in answer to your question, Carol, they've set up a whole protocol of how to ensure the safety for these kids.
Any other questions? Now, Madam Superintendent also has something to add.
I just want to add to Ms. Morris's comment, and make sure that is a part of the record as well, when Ms. Morris talks about having spoken with and met with the coaches, a part of the subcommittee work that I mentioned and added in the record in the very beginning of my presentation includes the ongoing and continued support of our state monitor. So our state monitor is working diligently to ensure that we are in compliance with the NJSIAA, recent updates, as well as conferring with me and meeting with them to ensure that whatever experience our children need face-to-face with our coaches, with our sports, that we remain in compliance. So I want to thank Ms. Morris and add that to the record, that when I mention the team's work, that is inclusive of our state monitor.
Can I ask for a consent agenda, Mr. Hastings?
He already started. He was...
Yes, so could I have a motion for all items C1, number 1 to C4, 9?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grillo, second by Ms. Etienne. Any comments or questions? C1, number 1 to C4, number 9.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
So we're looking at C1, 1 through C4, number 9, and there's no comments or questions. Would you like a roll call?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
And so, a motion to go to Executive Caucus.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on this date, July 23, 2020, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined and described below. Upon return, action may be taken, and this in regards to personnel matters. So we're going to be about 20 minutes, tops, all right? And we appreciate you coming out this evening.
I'll move it.
Oh, yeah, thank you, I was speaking, though. So just a second, please make a motion, a second, please.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So as I was saying to you, the public, thank you for coming out this evening, and have a good one.
Just to be clear, upon the conclusion of the executive session, the board is going to be coming back out and may take action.
I need a motion.
Move it.
Okay. Okay, question, roll call, Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. See you later, everybody. Goodbye. Good night. Thanks.